Regular meeting of the Abingdon School Committee for Tuesday, September 27th, 2016. It all rise for salute to the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off our meeting tonight with a hearing of visitors. If anyone has anything to say that they'd like to speak to us, there are guidelines for how we would handle hearing of visitors. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the committee? Okay, seeing no hands, I will move on to the reading and approval of records. Meetings for the minutes for June 21st, 2016. Anyone have any corrections, changes, anything they want?
I don't.
All right, can we have your motion to approve the minutes, June 21st, 2016, as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All in favor? All right. The overnight field trip for the eighth grade, is that?
At our last meeting, you, Matt McCurton and Mark Rigobio, presented to you the overnight trip to Philadelphia for the eighth grade students. The information in your packet is carried over from that last time we met. Certainly recommend and appreciate a positive vote on this. I think the students enjoyed it this last year, they'd enjoy it next year.
All right, anyone have any comments, questions?
So just based upon the ratios, we'll have 22 chaperones for this?
We will maintain eight to one, so that could fluctuate depending on how many students up to go. I'd rather answer it that way.
Okay.
We'll hold sacred to that. I should also mention that this is also, you know, highly educational in purpose. We talked about the connections to the curriculum. Should have mentioned that earlier.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion to approve the overnight field trip for the eighth grade students to Pennsylvania.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on, communications. You have information on the MAS-C, MAS-S Annual Joint Conference. Each year, we appoint one member to be the voting delegate at the conference. So that's something that we should take care of this evening.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Bailey as our delegate.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Should we look at the resolutions? All right, now that you've decided that I am representing you to vote at the conference, if you look, you were all given information on the resolutions. This year, there are only four. And I can go over basic resolution. You can ask any questions, make any comments, and let me know what questions you would like to me, like me to bring forward, or how you would like me to vote on a particular resolution. What I'd like to do is just skip down to where it says resolved, rather than reading through every word of each of the resolutions. So the first resolution is on the foundation budget. The MAS-C calls upon the legislature to enact the recommendations of the foundation budget into law, and further, that the legislator, legislature order the commission to reconvene in order to conduct further deliberations and make such recommendations as the Foundation Budget Review Committee may propose, and further, that the Foundation Budget Review Committee shall address and make recommendations toward the overall accuracy of the adequacy of the overall foundation budget. Anyone have any questions?
I would certainly hope that people would be in favor of this resolution, as it would likely improve the funding, chapter 70 funding for Abingdon, as they look to improve both the amount in the equation, the equity in the equation, the adequacy, which is the amount, so.
I agree with the equity portion of it, I think we need to look at this.
All right, so, we don't actually take a motion on this, but I'd like a sense of the board. From what I've heard so far, how many people would prefer that I vote on this as a yes?
I would.
I would.
Okay. Anyone have any questions they want me to ask? All right.
Not at this time, but we can get back to you in the next school committee meeting.
Yes, anytime, yes, anytime between now and the November meeting, which is the first week in November, so you've got about a month. All right, resolution, resolution number two, tax reform ballot question. Now therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees explores ways to promote social and economic equity through a ballot initiative whose purpose may include a state constitutional amendment, tax reform, protection of the state's neediest residents of all ages, and seeks additional revenue only from track tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents. Further, that the goal of such a ballot referendum would be to secure a stronger financial base, to underwrite, underwrite needed improvements in the infrastructure of the Commonwealth, as well as the educational, social, and economic well-being of its residents.
I just, I always feel compelled to make a recommendation to you for everything.
Sure.
And certainly sit back and the committee votes the way it chooses. Anything that improves the resources for kids in Massachusetts, I'm going to be in favor of. I don't know if this is code for raising taxes or not, because I don't, this resolution doesn't go into deeper detail with regard to that, but I, but I do believe this would improve resources for kids in Massachusetts in public schools, and therefore I would recommend voting in favor of it.
And basically, what it's saying is to explore ways to promote social, economic, and inquiry. It's not asking for something specific, it's looking for a recommendation to actually explore it and find ways to expand that base.
Okay, I guess the problem I have with it, singling out the wealthiest Massachusetts residents, of which I am not, however, I do have, I do have a problem with the constitutional amendment possibility as one of the recommendations, or one of the things they're going to be looking at, it's just singling out a group, who probably give back to their community through various fundraisers, through various donations, through various activities that they do themselves, and I think putting more of a burden on them when we have a healthcare system that really needs to be overhauled, so. So right now, I guess I'm really not in favor of this.
Okay, I'm not either.
I'm not myself either.
That's how democracy works.
Each year, as we go through this, I try to figure out which resolution is the one that's going to take the longest to be discussed on the, on the floor, and I'm never right, but I'm thinking this is going to be one of them this year. All right, resolution number three, charter school reform. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees urge the citizens of the Commonwealth to reject such a ballot initiative, and further, that MAS-C seek legislative approval of a comprehensive set of reforms that includes, one, establishment of strict guidelines or regulations to require that charter schools enroll represent cross-section, enrollment, excuse me, enrollment represent cross-sections of students residing within the school service area. Two, reporting of accurate numbers of students who leave charter schools to return to the sending districts or district of residence. Three, requiring the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to retain and report accurate data on enrollment of students with learning disabilities, physical disabilities, economically disadvantaged, emotional disabilities, and status as racial and linguistic minorities. Number four, state requirements that any charter school authorized in a community without its consent be funded in full by the Commonwealth, rather than by expropriation of chapter 70 education aid from the sending cities, towns, and regions. And number five, state funding in full of any mitigation funds created to offset the loss of state funding for students who become students in charter schools.
My recommendation would be to vote in favor of this reform. Later on in the agenda, you're going to see a question asking the committee to take a position on question two of the state ballot. 130 other school committees across the Commonwealth have supported that with regard to this. These are the talking points for the vote no on question two movement, basically.
I say yes.
I'm sorry?
Wendy said yes?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, resolution four, social and emotional well-being of students. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees shall be directed to deploy such resources of the association independently, and in collaboration with our other organizations, to gather resources, identify strategies, and improve public awareness of the importance of addressing student social and emotional well-being, and further, that MAS-C shall, shall give consideration to such public policy initiatives that prioritize action by stakeholders and stakeholder groups in collaboration with expert behavioral and healthcare providers as the most effective entities for addressing strategies that are in the best interest of children.
Our students are experiencing more trauma in their lives than ever before. We need to keep our students physically safe, but also socially and emotionally safe and well, and so I'd certainly be in support of, of work toward that end.
I'm in support of this resolution.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And after the conference, we'll bring back information on how those were handled. All right. The next item on your agenda, the mass ballot question number two, an act to allow fair access to public charter schools. And many cities and towns, many school committees have voted their, their opinion as far as the initiative position is concerned. Do they have a copy of the initiative position in their packet?
From, they have a copy of the ballot question.
All right.
Yeah, this is, yes, the initiative position.
All right, so many school committees have taken a vote as to how they stand on that initiative position on charter schools, and we have been asked if we would be interested in taking such a vote.
Yes, I would vote.
We would like, would like to take a vote as well.
Does anyone have any comments, anything they'd like to say beforehand? We have to look at how the word, it's very difficult. We can either vote to support question two, or the committee can vote in opposition to Massachusetts ballot question number two.
So could I suggest that?
Yes, you may.
Language that the committee votes in opposition of Massachusetts ballot question number two, an act to allow fair access to charter public schools. The reason I would ask that you do that is because you want your vote to be a positive vote, and so even though your vote is, it's a negative action, because you're not in favor of this, but it's taken in a positive, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
All right, anyone like to further that motion?
I'll support the motion that Peter just.
All right.
I'm not going to try to repeat it.
Second?
I'll say oh.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I cheated.
So, so the school committee stands opposed to the question two. All right. The next item on your agenda is from the policy subcommittee, to consider a policy on graduation. And you've had this for quite some time, however, one of our members is unable to be here today because she's on a trip for her business, and is asked that we set this aside and take a look at it in our next meeting. I'm going to leave that up to the committee. If you approve of setting it aside, we can do that. We'll do whatever you would prefer on this policy.
Yes, we could set it aside for another month, but I mean, this has sort of been going on for four months.
Yeah, that's the way I feel.
You know, for, forever, since probably back in the end of April, so we're talking almost six months now, this has sort of been hanging out.
Right. It's nothing we need right now, but it would be nice to just have it done.
Yeah, I have a tendency to agree, to try to get this wrapped up and just get it off the books, and that way, as more items come in for future meetings, we don't have to worry about this particular agenda item, because it has been kept being pushed off, and pushed off.
All right, those who are in favor of considering this policy at this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
So you want to take a motion, consider the policy?
We're going to do it now?
Motion to consider the policy?
And so who makes that motion?
Who would make the motion to consider the policy now?
I'll make the motion to consider the policy now. Sorry, Wendy.
No, that's okay.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
So the committee's considering this policy now?
So we're considering the policy now, and you have a copy of the policy.
Do a quick background.
Go ahead.
So at the top of this, you have two sheets. One was submitted early in the process, and then Mike, with a follow-up, added some Roman numerals to it. The beginning is really the Massachusetts Education Reform Law, and it, it talks about the responsibility of a school committee to set the standards, the local standards, for graduation requirements. Most school systems, then, at the graduation ceremony, have a member of the school committee hand out diplomas, which is sort of symbolic of the fact that the principal has, for lack of a word, blessed that this student has achieved all of those standards that was set locally by the school committee, although we all know there's a competency determination provided by the state. It's symbolic that the school committee member passes out the diploma in Abingdon. The chair has historically served in that function unless a member of the committee has had a son or a daughter graduating, and then they were able to hand a diploma to their son or daughter, and we've, we've, over the years, not 100% of the time, but we've tried to, that's, that's the model we've, we've tried to follow. So you have here Roman number one, two, three, four, or five, explaining those different options. I'd be looking for some consistent way to do this, so that we, because it's, we have people from all over who, who've wanted to pass out those diplomas from all sorts of different groups, and it's very important to us to have a very thoughtful, meaningful ceremony that runs effectively and efficiently for all of the parents and grandparents and friends and relatives who are there, so we can celebrate students who've attained a diploma from the Abingdon Public Schools. So just looking for a clear and concise direction from the committee on that.
And a consistent policy. In looking at the draft that was proposed by Mike, personally, I would like to see number one taken off. I think one and two are in, well, not actually in conflict, but I don't think they're both needed.
I should say, this was meant to be a menu, just the way we're using it, so thank you.
Number one says the chair may designate another member or members of the school committee to perform this function, and I, I don't think that gives a clear direction anymore than what, than the absence of a policy. Number two says in the absence of the chair, the vice chair will perform this function. In the absence of the chair and vice chair, the secretary will be, perform this function. So, I mean, that sets something definite that can be followed from year to year, and I think that works. I do think it's important that a member of the school committee with a son or daughter in the graduating class will be allowed, will be allowed to hand their son or daughter his or her diploma. That works. I think it's important. Number four, in the absence of the chair, the vice chair will perform this function. In the absence of the chair and vice chair, the secretary will form, perform the function. In the absence of the chair, vice chair, and secretary, the remaining most senior member of the school committee will perform this function. In the absence of the rest of the above.
As you can tell, when I wrote this, I'm an engineer, so I'm really specific about the way things, and the order of things.
I like that. It's very clear, and it tells exactly who's going to be there, so there's no question, and that's what, what, personally, that's what I'm looking for, is that there be no question. In the absence of all school committee members, the high school principal should perform this function. In the absence of all school committee members and the high school principal, the high school vice principal will perform this function. All right. So right now, there's too many options on here to call it a policy. We need to decide what it is that we want to keep, and what, that will actually define what we want to have happen at graduation.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we combine Roman numerals four and five into one, and approve Roman numeral three and the combined Roman numeral four and five as one, as, not as Roman numeral run, but as, as one combined?
Okay.
Two, three, four, and five?
Or we can just.
I'm sorry, three, four, and five? Yes.
Or we could just keep three, four, and five as three separate.
Yeah, we could.
Because when you start to bunch everything together too much, it can get confusing.
And you do have two separate entities in four and five, where four is the school committee, and five is the high school.
Right.
Staff. So.
Anyone else with a suggestion?
I'm fine with that.
So I think I'd like to make a motion to approve Roman numerals three, four, and five as the policy for graduation to hand out diplomas, and.
All right, before we take a vote, and we don't have a second yet, could I suggest that we change the order here?
Yep.
And take number three and put it down the bottom, so what is now number four would become number one.
Yep.
What's now number five would become number two. And what's now, number three would stay as number three. All right, can we have a motion to approve this policy as amended?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this will be the, after about six months, the new policy, to be added to the policy handbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, next is the quarterly update from North River Collaborative, and I think you all have a copy of it. According to the regulations for collaboratives, you are to get a quarterly report as the representative to North River Collaborative. I can present this information to you. You'll see that you've been given a list of the designees for each of the communities that are now members of North River Collaborative. Stoughton was added this year, so we have an additional member. The educational programs and services that are provided by the collaborative include Learning Center for Students with Multiple Disabilities, a Learning Center for Students with Autism and Developmental Disabilities, the North River School, Independence Academy, a community-based vocational program, District Services and Vision Services, Behavioral Consultation and Educational Services, Teachers of English Language Learners, Occupational Physical and Speech Therapy, Social Work Interns, Behavioral Health Initiative Funded, and Transportation. If anyone has any questions on any of those programs? If I can't answer, Wendy could probably help me, because she's the one that determines when we need to use them. All right, we also have enrollment numbers in multiple disabilities. There are 20 autism developmental disabilities, 24.3, which just doesn't mean we've got a third of a student there, it means it's a, that's a student that will be leaving partway through the school year. Emotional disabilities, 47. Substance abuse and dependence, 16, and transportation, 477.
So these are numbers for the collaborative, these are not Abingdon?
No, these are, these are for the collaborative. We are, we participate in collaborative services, we're a member of the collaborative, which means all of these services are available to us if we have a student that needs them. And they're the kind of services that are too expensive for an individual school system to be able to provide. If I'm wrong, you can correct me.
One quick question, do we have an overall number of how many Abingdon students? Not by groupings, but just an overall number?
We do, but I don't have it with me this evening, but here can email you.
When the annual report comes out, there is specific information that the percentages from the sending districts for each of the areas that are serviced, and we do use a lot of their services, but I don't have those numbers with me.
We also have contracted services during the school day, with people who'll come over and provide an environment for kids that they need in our, in seats in Abingdon, so there are students that go there that occupy a seat, and there are students here that somebody comes to work with them from North River.
Can we access more of the district services versus the programs?
The next section was a fiscal update. Student enrollment is currently anticipated to be at the levels predicted in the fiscal year 17, although, although there are openings in all programs. Spending is in line with projections, and that's something that, as a board member, we look at every single month. And it gives a listing of the grants that we are able to, well, that North River Collaborative has gotten, many of which we have the ability to participate in. Independence Academy, $500,000. Department of Public Health, funding offsets the cost of the program for students in recovery from substance abuse and dependence. The Elementary and Secondary Counseling Grant, $383,820. Mass Family Network, $37,000. Mass Commission for the Blind After-School Program, $35,929. Massachusetts Charitable Mechanics Foundation, $3,548. And the Title III Consortium Grant, $42,421, which includes their summer program, which was $1,198. Anyone have any questions on any of those? And as I mentioned when we first started, Stoughton was added as a new member, and the new member of the board, Anita Hill, has completed an orientation and come to all of the board meetings so far. And we have a new strategic plan that was developed in 2000, for 2016 to 2018. We also participated in the development of. Any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda, non-union bargaining, consideration of cost of living for this increase for the superintendent of schools for fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18. for fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18. All right. Peter is looking for a 2% increase as the other members of the district got. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second. All in favor for approving the 2%?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. All right. Report of Superintendent of Schools.
In your packet, you have a request for an annual field trip that the music department, art classes would like to go to, Washington, D.C. Historical cultural tours include the Smithsonian museums, musical performances, and to make different historical connections. Students will be writing, journaling, there'll be logs, they'll be reading articles and reflections about their experiences, and they'll be connecting and relating artistic ideas and work with personal meaning and external content. They'll be synthesizing this information, they'll be responding to their students in different persuasive expressions of what they've learned, and you got a sample itinerary to where they would be going. This is taking place through a travel group, World Strides, which we've used before. They help provide supervision in the hotel, so that students are very busy all day long. They eat, and then they're in their rooms. Transportation is provided by the highest-rated luxury bus coaches available. And I'd recommend approval.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. Is it for all grades?
It's only for the students in these classes. I'm not exa- I believe it is all grades, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
I believe it's just the high school students.
Right, just the high school students. Yeah, but all grades.
It's the high school students that are in the music programs.
These classes are the music and art programs.
And what day is the 27th to the 30th?
It's Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
They maintain a 10-to-1 ratio, so depending on how many students go, they up the chaperones to maintain their ratio.
Having chaperoned the trip for 11 years in the past. It is a well worthwhile program and very well organized and supervised. All right. Does anyone have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the overnight field trip for the music department to Washington, D.C.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have anything else? Nope. All right. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupae Personnel Services.
Hello, good evening. At the last meeting, I requested a motion to approve the 2016-17 homeschool requests. As you recall, we have 20 in total, five in second grade, one in third grade, three in fourth grade, one in fifth grade, four in sixth grade, one in eighth grade, one in ninth grade, two in 10th grade, and two in 12th grade. They have submitted all their paperwork and are requesting final approval.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
All right. Motion to approve the homeschool requests.
Make that motion.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next is informational, an update on our professional development in-service day that was held on September 13th, was really well received. We're focusing on technology, as I shared at the last meeting, at the first three in-service days this year through Microsoft, and all staff is engaged. And we have staff at every building who are trainers and who are working closely with people, so that we're consistently using technology, learning about it, integrating it into our practice. So, that'll be going on for the next two, which the next one is October 7th, and then we also have the full day November 8th.
What's the overall comfort range amongst the faculty in using the technology and using the software?
Yeah, we just actually had a meeting yesterday with the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee, and then we also had a meeting earlier with the administrative team, and it's being really well received. And they're using it as part of using SharePoint as a way to share information and do analysis of the pilots that they're using, so that everyone can also go on and read the comments that other people are sharing about the three different programs. And then also is, it's an easier way as, you know, secretaries, administrators, teachers, we're all learning new ways on how to use technology and share that. Terry Sullivan just did a really pretty cool video that she just shared for a faculty meeting, and we all, you know, enjoyed that, using video, using the tools that she learned and creating a mix. That was something that she was able to share with her faculty. That had great reviews at yesterday's meeting. So, I think it's- everybody has a different comfort level when it comes to technology, but we've been doing a lot of work in the area of technology over the years, and a real push this year in leading into next year, and then the movement in terms of what we'll do for the type of student, you know, initiatives that we have planned as well. So, it varies, but honestly, people are, you know, the more you use it-
So, I sat next to a music teacher during the professional development and learned how to- how you could potentially keep an entire class using Office 365 and then push your assignments out through email to our students. And her comment was, remember the video we saw last time with the building project? That theme song was written by John Williams. And her comment was, we can talk about pitch, tone, quality, and things like that in class, and then I could push that out with an embedded link to a John Williams performance, so the students would listen to that at home when they open it up. And with the devices that all of our students have, handhelds, they could actually experience that through their telephone. And if you go down to the photocopy machine and you embed a link to a John Williams performance on a piece of paper, it doesn't work. But it works with using technology. So, it creates- it redefines the experience for the students in terms of what you're able to do. So, that's just scratching the surface. Now, I don't think that that's necessarily going to- that level of sophistication's going to happen in the next month, because everybody's at different places, but that's the goal, to get everybody moving into that direction so we can improve the experience for kids.
Great. Any other questions? All right, great. Next is also informational. The- every year, we have an indicator that we have to provide information to the state Special Education Department, which then follows up with the federal Special Education Department. So, this year, we will be collecting Indicator Eight, which will be focusing on parent feedback on how well our schools are engaging and partnering with parents and with students with disabilities. So, we will be forwarding that out to our parents of students with disabilities and soliciting that input, and that goes directly- the survey will be filled out, and that goes directly to the state. But they'll provide us with how many people responded and what the responses were, you know, at the end of the school year. So, I'll keep you posted on that. Okay? And then the next and last piece in terms of- is also informational. We're in the process of updating the school policy substance use prevention policy and the district wellness policy. So, our plan is to email the policies out to the subcommittee, policy subcommittee. And then I know Peter is going to talk to people regarding availability on October 18th, 19th of the subcommittee to perhaps take a look at the policy, make any changes, and then we'll be back at the October 25th for a first view as a group, and then hopefully finalize at our November 29th meeting here at school committee.
Any specific faculty or staff that are working- that work this policy, or?
Well, right now, we just received it, actually. So, I'm going to start that, and then basically I forward that out to everybody. A lot of it are just slight changes, and so it's updating the policy and the wellness. Kate Casey has been, you know, all along, she runs a wellness committee. We meet, you know, routinely throughout the year, and so hers is just a matter of just having another look. And the administrators just finished that, as well as the wellness committee at the end of last school year. And so now, we just have a little tweak, and that'll go back out to the wellness committee for a final, and then it'll go to the subcommittee, policy subcommittee, for your review. And the same thing in terms of the new changes, which we've already had substance abuse policies in place, but now they just have to be tweaked with the new regulations. And we just spent a lot of work with updating all the policies through MASC, et cetera, over, is it last year or the year before? Last year.
Last year.
And so, we're going to continue to do that, and then we'll bring it back to all of you.
Now, this has come down from the state. Is there a deadline when this happens?
Yeah, December. So, that's why we're moving it up, because we don't have a December meeting here. So, if at all possible, for those of you that are still serving on the policy subcommittee, we- that's why the- I kind of listed out those dates, because we don't have a December, and we do like to make our deadlines. But if we don't, then we look at it in January.
All right.
But I have not seen major changes, so I don't think that there's going to be anything questionable.
Okay.
So, the state had promised for a law- when I say the state, the legislature passed the law, and then DESI promised some guidelines on it, and it took a while for those to come out. Those are now out, and they're asking that this be in place for the first of the year. So, we have enough time for the policy subcommittee to look at it, people in the district to look at it, and then give the school committee a first read and then another month, so that it's out there in the community, and then we could potentially approve it in December. So, we're not, you know, we've got time to do it right.
We've got time to run it.
If we start it now.
Okay. We just want to make sure that the process we follow in the replacement of a policy, of an existing policy that's already been approved-
Right.
-is correct.
Right.
I know we ran into a problem, or a potential problem.
Part of it will be this will replace the previous policy. It'll be part of the motion, or well, part of what I request for motion.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good point.
But you done with your report?
I am all set.
Thank you. All right. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. Good evening. I have my first item is the FY '17 budget update. And certainly, you have the salary and expense allocation for FY '17. So, these are our best estimate as of today, or as of last birthday, based on hiring positions. Some, if you remember, we were able to move some staff from North River into the salary account, so those are in these allocations. And then, so these we track throughout the year for salary expense.
Okay. And that, this total number is the number that's-
The school department budget, $21,386,610.
Thank you.
And any other questions? School building committee update. We had today actually another exciting meeting of furniture fixtures and equipment. We're finalizing colors and product types to then bring to the school building committee in October for kind of a final checkoff and hoping to go out to bid on furniture fixture and equipment in October, November timeframe. And so, it's very exciting. It's chairs, computers, library furniture, cafeteria furniture.
And colors and-
Colors and texture and finishes.
Types.
So, we'll be doing, like I said, a presentation to the school building committee in October. The contractor's still reporting that by mid-October, he hopes to have the building 100% enclosed, doors, windows. There will still be finished work that needs to be done around doors and windows, but the building will be closed and anticipates having the heat running by mid to late October. And that's his expense, that's the contractor's expense on heat until the building's ours. And one of the questions that has come up is, how do you run the heat when there's all the dust in the building and what happens to- what happens to the equipment during that time? And there's different types of heat in the building, and he'll be using the radiant heat, so it won't be- it won't be anything blowing. And if needed, if the winter does become very blowing, also bringing portable heating events. It's much better to do the finished work in the building with a consistent heat throughout the building. The gym, so as you know, the construction came from the back gym part of the building forward and then to the high school preschool side, and then to the, you know, the last section, the middle school side. So, the gym area and the auditorium area, there's equipment in the gym, there's baskets, there's the folding wall is up. They'll be starting to install the gym floor in the next few weeks. The auditorium is being wallboarded and then painted, so it's coming- it's starting to come together. Millwork, all the woodwork and buildings within the building should be arriving on-site in the next few weeks as well, so we'll start installing those. So, yes, it's moving along. And although Jeanette's not here, we are on time and on budget. We're averaging about $4 million plus. And our MSBA reimbursement, again, they're recording, using 20 days. There also, I'll also mention that we have been working with the traffic engineer, the Abbott Police Department, Highway Department, regarding the lights up Route 18 and Glen Oates Way, and we're hoping that this week we'll be able to make some slight adjustments in the morning that, you know, it's- what we've really learned is that, well, as you know, you change one thing, it impacts other things. So, trying- so, they have recommendations for adjusting some of the timing from Lincoln Boulevard onto Glen Oates Way in the morning, but don't want to extend the light so that 18 backs up to Locs, you know. So, I think it's a very fine line around what can actually be adjusted. But we will be out there at 6:45 on Thursday morning making some adjustments in conjunction, like I said, with recommendations from the traffic engineer as well as the Abbott Police Department.
And I've heard you've made a great- great traffic manager.
I've tried. I have to say that working- having our SROs with us has been invaluable in terms of working on that intersection, especially at the end of the day, with the construction going on on Route 18. And dismissing the high school has been, for many weeks, you know, since school opens, not been fun. But having SROs and then the Abbott Police Department has also helped with traffic there. So, at the end of the day, with- when it gets backed up, we've been sending cars out of Glen Oates Way down to Washington Street to turn on Washington Street, to take a left on Washington Street, and that has really allowed the backup that was occurring.
For those who don't know what an SRO is, it's our school resource officers that we've got for the first time this year.
It's- it's- do you want to talk a little?
No, just, we should tell people that the police department wrote a grant, a federal grant. They're- the town is spending some money on them that's required in the grant, but most of it, 90%, is paid for by this grant. And the two SROs are outstanding. The communication, the collaboration with the leadership of the police department, the chief, the deputy chief lieutenant Sullivan, have been outstanding, I think it's safe to say.
They have regular meetings, and school resource officers have been in schools, they've been working with the justice- they taught a couple of classes, they put their cafeterias, they put their missiles, building relationships with both the parents and students, their parents, students, and staff. So, it's been- it's been very positive.
That's wonderful.
There's a great video out there on cable narrated by Peter on the- was narrated by you?
Which one?
The tour of the inside of the school.
The tour of the school.
The tour of the school. Oh, I did narrate it.
You did some of it.
Yeah, yeah. I know, but I misspoke. When I talked about a reimbursement, I said we're getting $57 for every $1 we spend, rather than 50%- 57% reimbursement. So, we spend 43 cents, and they give us 57 cents. That's a better way to say it, but anyway.
But there are videos, I think I've seen on Abington Cable. I think there's a link on the Abington School Building Committee website. But I will say, the video's from three weeks ago, and what's happened in three weeks is also pretty amazing. So, there may be a new video out tomorrow night for the building committee meeting, which is that together.
Like a tease.
Yeah.
Coming events. All right. Move on to establishment of the next school committee meeting date, which is Tuesday- Move on to establishment of the next school committee meeting date, which is Tuesday, October 25th, 2016, at 7:00 in the Carter Hearing Room, Lieutenant Hall. And is there any other informational?
So can I borrow that letter for me?
Sure.
So just under, I gave committee members this just before the meeting. This was, this information was embargoed until yesterday. So this is a letter that I wrote to Terry Sullivan, principal of the high school. Dear Terry, congratulations to you and the high school faculty and staff on the attainment of Level 1 accountability status for Abington High School. This distinction certifies that Abington students are receiving a high-quality world-class education. You may know that when the Massachusetts public schools are compared as a country against international data from around the world, we rank consistently in the top 10 on the Program for International Students Assessment, the PISA test. Therefore, Abington High School students' designation as a high-performing school in the Commonwealth Level 1 means that our students are performing at the highest levels globally. It is worth repeating, Abington students are receiving a high-quality world-class education. As a pre-kindergarten through grade 12 system, there are obviously many dedicated and talented individuals who care deeply and work hard for our students. They have all been a part of this hard and meaningful work and success. I am sincerely proud of all of those individuals and our high school. Most of all, I am happy for and proud of the students we serve. I look forward to continuing our critical work in raising student achievement so that Abington students are best prepared for the many challenges that they will face and we will face in the future. This is just one indicator of what a school system does with its students. This is our state test information. You're aware that our students are going to the best schools in the country for college. You're also aware that we've improved our ACT and our AP scores, and consistently our SAT scores, while also increasing the number of students that are taking those scores, which is, those are wonderful indicators of the work that is being done. Overall, we've gotten our data from, our preliminary data from the state, and it's generally good. There's still work to be done. You'll be getting further updates on the state testing in the meeting hopefully to come. If not, the meeting to come in October, then in November. It will continue that work. This is just one indicator. I don't, but it's, but it is exciting that we had a high school that was at Level 3, and now it's Level 1 over a period of two years. So I wanted to make sure I recognized Terry, the high school, and everyone else in the district, because it's not just the high school effort. They're not born, students are born in their eighth-grade year. We work as a system with our children. Other than that, we've got dates to remember. Thursday, September 29th, we have our Special Education Rights and Responsibilities meeting at 1:00 and at 6:00 p.m., not 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., at the North School Building. That's when the PAC, the SPED PAC is, the SPED PAC is, we try to form a SPED PAC for Abington. Dr. Thomas facilitates that. On Wednesday, October 5th, we have the Green Wave Boosters meeting in the community room at the police station. On October 7th, we have an in-service early release day. On Monday, October 10th, we have Columbus Day. All school offices are closed. On Tuesday, October 11th, the Abington Music Parents will have a meeting in the teachers' room at Abington High School at 7:00 p.m. On Tuesday, October 25th, we have our regularly scheduled school committee meeting here at 7:00. On Wednesday, the 9th of November, the National Honor Society will be having their induction ceremony at 6:00 p.m. in the music room at the high school. We have a building committee meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at the police station. And.
All right. There's nothing else to add? And one more to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.